May I call a school committee meeting to order? First, can we have the pledge of allegiance to flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, special recognition?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, too, if I may, I'm just going to announce that this meeting is being recorded and if anyone else is recording, there are none. So, a couple of great recognitions to share with you. One, and they had done some presentations earlier in previous years. The Department of Ed has a spring convening each year about Ed evaluation, educator evaluation, and seeks representatives from across the Commonwealth to present on how things are going in the district. And this year, we were lucky to have Beth Chamberlain, principal of Bryn Mawr School, and one of her kindergarten, soon-to-be first grade teachers, Jessica DiStefano, represent the Auburn Public Schools. And as you can see here, Claire Abbott is from the Department of Ed. She really takes the lead on educator evaluation, but she was extremely positive and appreciative of the work that both Mr. Stefano and Mrs. Chamberlain did. So, I wanted to make you aware, and I have thanked both of them for volunteering to do this and really, again, shining a really nice spotlight on Auburn, which is great. The other one, we were made aware from a teacher at the high school that Abby Bear has her photograph titled "Double the Rainbow, Double the Happiness", featured in the Marvel Collections Top 10 submission. So, kudos to her. It was really a beautiful photograph that they had shared with us.
Wonderful.
I see there's no citizens' comment, no student representatives tonight. Approval of, motions for approval of the regular meeting, minute meetings for May 5th, 2015, and June 3rd, 2015, if you want them together.
I'll make that motion that we approve those minutes from May, was it May 3rd?
May 5th?
No, May 5th.
And June 3rd.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I approve the May 5th, June 3rd. I abstain. And back to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item, we had talked about this at our last meeting briefly, and this is that special end-of-year conference savings. This is the joint conference of the school committee and superintendents, and we've had great representation in the past. It will be in Hyannis again this year from November 4th to the 7th. So, if you are interested in participating, we need to have this in prior to July 15th. So, there's paperwork. Be in touch with Mrs. Zottner if you would. Complete the paperwork, and she will handle getting us registered for that conference. It's pretty quite good.
I have already did my hotel room, so that's all set. And I'll do everything like I usually do.
Good, perfect. So, through the chair, that's good to bring up. So, if you're going to be staying there, best that you call soon and get that reservation.
Yes, because it's on your own.
Well, I gave Elaine mine as I came in, because it says you can fax it, and I know the school department can do that for us. Fax the-
For the hotel.
For the hotel room, if you give them a credit card number.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
The next item, I wanted to make you aware. The Millbury Public Schools had actually, and I'm out of order, I apologize, had let us know that they're doing a new training, a training for new school committee members. I'm not sure if any of you even need to do this, but also if any of you wanted to attend. As a refresher, it's July 21st at 6:00 PM. So, if you let Elaine know, she can take care of getting you registered for that. It was nice of them to extend that to us. The next project I'm particularly excited about, it is a program with UMass Medical. Actually, Auburn High was invited to participate in this project that they are doing, which is really focused on encouraging teens to quit smoking. I don't think that we have a very large number of teens that smoke, but one teen doing it is too many, in my opinion, and it's one of those habits that they say is extremely hard to break. So, we were excited that we're one of only eight or nine districts that were invited, so I think it's great. Joe Trong, the nurse at the high school, will be the lead on this. Mr. Handfield's excited, the nurse leader. So, I'll keep you apprised of this, but I think it's a great opportunity to enlighten our students who maybe, hopefully, they can change their habits.
Through the chair?
Yes.
When I was at the middle school, we had people speak to those students about this, and I'm wondering, I think it was the Auburn Health Department, perhaps. I'm wondering if anything like that still happens.
You know, it's, over the years, there've been different programs. Mrs. Barrett was involved at one time with a program as a collaboration with Oxford, all around smoking cessation, and they did reach out and share information with the middle schools. So, we can certainly be sure that that gets shared with middle school as well.
I think that's a good way to, good place to start.
Right.
Because most of them probably haven't started smoking yet, but are going to.
No.
Yeah. It's a good idea. The sooner we can catch them, or to get them to not start is the idea. Exactly.
And at that, because the sixth graders all wanted to go home and tell the parents they had to quit.
Yeah.
But if they got anybody to quit, that's wonderful, so.
That's good. The next item, as we do annually, and this will be posted on our website, we take very seriously our responsibility to maintain safe environments, and it really takes an ongoing effort. As noted in here, this is a list, and certainly it's not an exhaustive list, but a listing of some of the many events, activities, discussions that are had at the various schools to really promote a positive learning environment. So, I wanted to share this with you before we post it up on the website.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Do you have a comment about that?
Go ahead.
For the sake of TV, can you go through the process of reporting a bullying child or someone being bullied?
Sure. So, what would happen, and it varies sometimes by age. So, at the middle school and high school, we actually have an anonymous tip line that goes directly to our school resource officer as well as the assistant principals from both the middle school and high school. So, they can report it anonymously if they'd like. Sometimes at the younger grade levels, parents can be involved at that level, too. They would reach out to the principal or assistant principal and make them aware of it. So, what we need to do is we document any incidents of discipline, because what the difference between, and we don't want there to be negative discipline incidents, but an isolated incident does not rise to the level of bullying by the legal definition. It needs to be over a period of time, because kids sometimes make mistakes. But we document that to make sure that it isn't something that happens over time, because if a pattern develops, then it could be risen to the level of bullying. So, we document the discipline as well as any potential bullying. There's an investigation that happens, parents are apprised of it, and a plan is created. Now, our goal is always to educate a child who may be engaging in negative behavior to try and get them to change their behavior. That's always our first step. If that can't happen or is not successful, then there are negative consequences, some sort of a punishment that is doled out, because, you know, our obligation is to make sure that every child feels comfortable and safe coming to school so they can work and learn and grow, you know, with their classmates. So, anyone that has concerns should absolutely reach out first to the child's teacher and then to the principal if needed.
Okay.
Yep.
And I don't know if it's touched upon at every school during orientation time or whatever, but maybe if the principals can make a point of that process and staying off Facebook to air dirty laundry.
Sure. You know, and that's the, so through the chair, to bring that up. We don't monitor Facebook posts, so.
I don't blame you.
You know, but if someone brings an issue to our attention, we will absolutely take it seriously, document it, and try to get it resolved. That's the goal. So, if there are concerns, go to your child's teacher first. You know, if it's a greater concern and it still isn't resolved, go to the principal. You know, there's multiple steps to go.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And through the chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
One of the biggest problems we had in the sixth grade is students that would bully when our backs were turned, and the students were reluctant to tell on them because they figured they'd get more bullying.
Sure.
So, are the students being encouraged through guidance or whatever that they need to speak up?
They are. At the beginning of the year, at the lower levels, and even through the middle school with the whole PBIS, they go through a training about expected behaviors in all regards, whether it's in the cafeteria in the classroom, and really try to promote, if something inappropriate is happening, you need to tell somebody about it. So, and the guidance counselors, they do throughout the year, meet all the way up through eighth grade with the students. So, that's a great point.
Good, okay. Because I addressed the cafeteria one day, whole sixth grade, because I had heard more and more and more, and I said, "You've got to tell us." I said, "And if you want, we can go upstairs right now and talk to whoever the principal was." I had 20 kids come with me.
Oh, wow.
I mean, they need to know that it's safe to do that, and that's the only way it's going to stop.
Exactly. Absolutely right.
Now, as far as the tip line goes, how do you manage that? I mean, do you, how do you get that number out to the children and the parents if needed?
So, that's advertised. It's in the handbook for the middle school and high school.
Oh, good.
And they share that with the students at the start of every year, and it's monitored by the assistant principals of the middle school and high school as well as our school resource officer. So, if someone is un-
So, they know.
But they do know what's there.
Oh, yes. That's great.
So, in terms of unfinished business, I had shared with you that a resident had really made a suggestion, quite honestly. I don't know that it rose to the level of a request, but made a suggestion that the lights at Auburn High School be kept on on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights, particularly during the summer months. So, as promised, we did an analysis, and what this resident was suggesting was to do it at half-power. So, I will tell you that we did it based on putting the lights on full power to have them on. So, it could be at a reduced cost. The analysis that was done, and Mrs. Zottner put this together, we actually looked at sunset time to 10 o'clock at night. Now, there was always an expectation or a rule, I would say, in Auburn that the parks closed at 9 o'clock at night. So, this even goes beyond that, but this was, again, the suggestion that was made. Even beyond, though, when the sun sets, that twilight time, it is still light enough out that people may stay, you know, to, whether it's to kick a ball or perhaps walk the track and whatnot. We had actually based this off of analysis that had been done a couple of years ago, actually, the fall of 2012, regarding the tennis lights. But as you can see here, looking at June, July, and August, again, this is full power, and it would have it on until 10:00. The total cost would be $3,561. Now, the rate that we chose, the rate that we used, excuse me, not chose, was $50 an hour. Now, that is not what it is charged to actually have the lights on. But there was an analysis done back in the fall of 2007, Dr. Allen at the time, and it had Melanson and Heath came in and actually looked at, because it's not just the cost of using the lights in that time. There is wear and tear on the light bulbs that would need to be replaced and things. So, he had done an analysis that calculated all of those ancillary costs as well. So, as you can see here, which would basically be over 13 weekends that would take place, there is a substantial cost to that. The challenge is that we don't have a funding source to pay for this. I think we all are in support of, you know, family time and appropriate and safe environments. I would offer, I think, that in June, July, and August, you know, with just the natural light that we have on good days, that, on many days, and obviously it wanes once we get past the midpoint of June, but it is actually open and available until 8:30 at night anyway or so, which, to my mind, is ample in terms of for the costs. But I share that with you for any input that you may have around that.
Anybody get any comments? Whether we should, shouldn't, or?
My thought is, there's natural light until almost 9 o'clock, if not.
Right. That's what you said.
And we're trying to save money in so many ways, and we are one of a few school districts, as we've heard from all the people that we've been interviewing, that where they are, the students pay fees for sports and pay fees for this and that, and Auburn doesn't do that to its students. So, I don't really want to spend money that we don't have, and then maybe someday have to charge our students for other things. I was concerned about the water. Do we have water fountains down there at all, or are they asking to be installed, or?
Yeah, so that was the other.
That was the other part of it.
Item that was mentioned, and quite honestly, you know, we really didn't look into that to the same degree, so I can come back with you. I really did not speak with Mr. Fahy about it, but.
Do we even have one?
I believe that there is one near the concession stand. I'm trying to picture it.
There's four in the back.
There are four in the back of the concession stands?
Oh, there's four?
There are, just aren't on.
Okay.
Oh, they're not on?
They're just not on. They're not functional.
Okay.
I can say, I concur with the citizens' concerns about that, because on the really hot days.
No, they should be, if they're there, they should be on.
Yeah.
So, I have no idea what the cost would be, but I have to agree with the wife.
Yeah, but I don't think that's a big of a deal.
Yeah. I will certainly speak with Mr. Fahy about that and see if that's something that we can get rectified.
Jess, any comments?
No, I agree about the water fountain, but, you know, as a kid, you know, you bring a bottle of water with you.
Yeah, but some don't.
I know, but maybe we don't need all four of them. Would you say there were four?
Yeah.
Maybe not all four come on, maybe one.
I think they're all on the back of the, I think they're on the water line in the back of the concession stand, so, but I think they need to be cleaned, so maybe they just clean one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's just something we can look into and report back to us on that.
Sure, yeah. Yep.
And as for the lighting, I just think if we take that cost upon ourselves and start offering that, it's not going to be just for Auburn. I think it's going to open it up to, you know, other towns and wear and tear on our property. So, I think we need to factor that into.
I see your point about other areas.
Right.
I think, I think as the lightness of the day, too, it makes a big difference. I mean, you're light between 8:30 and quarter-nine, 9:00 o'clock. I think that's good enough and long enough to have the people on the fields, and you go any later than that, you may be getting things happening down there you don't want.
Mm-hmm, right.
So, I think it is a good idea to keep it as is. I don't know, do you want an emotion for that, or are you just satisfied with the way the committee stands on it?
I would be happy. To me, there's a clear consensus that electricity-wise, to not move in the direction of the lights, but to look into the water bubbler if we can get that issue resolved. And I'm happy to convey that.
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Summer of Transitions actually began on Saturday, June 13th. I did share with all of you an article from RMS Daily that was in there today, and it was, when I arrived there on Saturday morning, probably around 9:30 or so, after stopping at three Dunkin' Donuts, because I was getting too many things, I couldn't overwhelm any of them with what I was trying to bring. It was a buzz there. There were probably 30-plus different individuals that were all moving. It was just like an orchestra running. Mr. Fahy has done a great job coordinating all of that, the activity and things, and so we're well on our way to have this be as successful. Everything's, everything is going to be done. We keep channeling that, so everything will be ready.
Good.
Also, wanted to let you know, you had approved at the May 20th meeting for the repurposing of some surplus furniture that we can't use. I did want to make you aware that locally, and that was in the article as well, that the serving line and some of the kitchen equipment that could not be used elsewhere through this company is then going to be used at Treasure Valley, where a lot of the scouts use. So, I thought that was a great, a great reuse of it, and some certainly is going to benefit internationally. But I think locally, that was a great, a great thing as well.
That was a great article. If people haven't read it, they really should.
Yes, it was.
With the pictures and everything.
Yeah, it was. It was a great article, great article.
Okay.
In terms of July meeting date, they are seeking to close the books on FY '15 a bit sooner than they typically do. They'll have some people coming in regarding the bond rating this year. So, in working with the town to do that, rather than have our meeting as originally planned, to schedule it early rather than the 15th, and I offered three dates as potential ones, Wednesday, July 8th, Thursday, July 9th, or Monday, July 13th, with the preferred one being the 8th, if at all possible. And I don't know if that works for people.
Jess?
Monday is my preference, but, I mean, you know, if it's.
I'm not good with Monday. I'm not.
I mean, I can certainly make it work. If everyone can do a certain date, then I will make that work.
Dorothy?
Through the chair, I just can't do Thursday, but I can do either one.
Kayle?
Oh, that's true.
Oh, yeah, you're off. You're out.
Unless you did Monday, July 6th, I could do that.
I prefer not to do it on a Monday, if possible. How about that Wednesday, then? Would that be okay? Dorothy?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. On Wednesday, I can do it, but Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make it work.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we're going to change it then to, and actually, why don't we, through the chair, we'll just take a motion on that, just because you had voted on the date originally.
Sure. Can I have a motion to have that meeting on the 8th?
I'll make that motion to move the meeting to Wednesday, July 8th.
Second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Also, want to share with you a proposed change. I'd actually spoken about this a few times over the past couple of years, but to really take a look at how we do our meetings. And my proposal is that one meeting per month would be a business and financial focus. So, Mrs. Worsbicky would be here. We would have the typical items, the year-to-date budget reports, any updates, contracts, bids, or things that would be done. And then at the next meeting of the month would be a focus on, with Dr. Lozay here. So, we would keep really more like of a curriculum, teaching and learning focus. And that way, they would split the meetings throughout the year, and proposed here that the first meeting in the month would be business and financial, and the second meeting of the month, other than November, which is really a budgetary-focused meeting. And there are some where both may potentially be in attendance, but it's my recommendation, so I share it with you for your input.
Through the chair, I just have a question about the setup.
Yeah, me too.
So, if there's unfinished business from, like, the teaching and learning meeting, will that carry on to the financial meeting, or will it go a whole month?
So, what we could do throughout the year, when I was looking at this past, this current school year, the past one, to see when we've had presentations made. So, for example, on a teaching and learning one, in October, typically, we've done the principals of all come in and done, like, an overview of plans for the year. So, that would be considered the teaching and learning one, and Dr. Lozay would sit up at the table. She would have some updates, too. She might update about professional development. But if there was any unfinished business, I'd ask that person to come to the next meeting so it didn't wait a whole month.
Okay.
So, there could be some meetings where both would be in attendance if there were any carryover items.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the business and financial, would we be requesting selectmen to join us at times? I know we had talked about that before, but maybe getting.
Because of the budget.
On the budget?
Oh, in terms of the budgetary meetings, so, those I had envisioned, in, Town Manager Jacobson and I, we were supposed to be meeting tomorrow, but there's a conflict, so we're going to actually be meeting on July 1st with Mr. Kasnovich and Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Worsbicky, and myself. And our intention was to try and schedule those meetings even outside of these with the finance committee and the board of selectmen in school committee with the three boards.
Okay.
So, and that will have to get some dates from you to do.
Yeah, I think that's imperative for next year cohesiveness and just for me to learn the process even better, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, that I had envisioned being in addition to these meetings here.
All right.
Unseparate. Because I think that we're typically, finances met on Wednesdays, selectmen meet on Mondays, so we'd have to coordinate some optional dates and stuff.
I really, I like the old, the old way we're doing it, but. As far as that goes, excuse me, I'm sorry, I should ask you first. Dorothy, you got any comment?
Actually, just, I see no problem with it, only because it seems we get more streamlined the guests that we would have, because I know sometimes we're trying to shuffle people in and out and get a lot of people into one agenda.
Right.
So, from that perspective, I consider that it might help, like, our teachers get out here earlier.
Yeah.
But really, immemorable or whatever, we make those decisions.
Okay.
Kayle?
I would think it's going to be all right. I would just say that perhaps if we didn't think it was working, we could bring it forward again and reverse to the usual way.
Right.
Okay. Jess, were you all done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think we could give it a whirl, but that's just my personal.
Well, the only thing I would like to know is if, are you going to have citizens' comment at both hearings?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. So, I'm not suggesting, through the chair, I'm not suggesting changing the format necessarily, other than in place of, on the second meeting of the month, instead of business and financial, that we would have the teaching and learning update report.
Okay.
Yep. So, citizens' comment would remain.
Okay.
Everything else on here would stay the same.
Could I have a motion to approve that, please?
I'm making a motion to approve the new format as presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I will let them both know, you know here, too. But also, Mrs. Holloway, to your point there, I think that if we find that it doesn't work at all, we can always revert out at any time. Absolutely.
And you get to come to all the meetings, right?
I do get to come to all the meetings, yes, thank you.
Isn't that nice?
She could have said no, because you already voted.
Yeah.
Would have to change it real quick. Okay, business and financial.
Through the chair, including your package, and I'll probably take a little bit of time with the listing of items we have for this evening. But the first item I'd like to provide to you is a letter that we received from, or a memo that the superintendent and I have received from Ms. Janice King, our food service director. It indicates that the Auburn Public Schools will be participating with the tech collaborative to purchase the majority of our food service needs for the upcoming fiscal year 2016. The decision was made to leverage the district's buying power, because we have a wider ability of reaching out to 75 different districts rather than what we currently have with the French River Collaborative and the resources in providing us the ability of reducing some of the operating costs for the food service department. Included in your, in your package, you'll see a memo that was actually generated by Ms. King that was, again, presented to superintendent and I. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
Yes. I don't know if this is relevant to this. Go ahead, Dorothy.
Through the chair, I actually just did have one question just in general, which might be better suited for Ms. King, and you can certainly tell me if this is not private. But I did notice that there's not water for purchase available in the elementary schools at all, and a lot of times the kids don't bring their water bottles bottles, and they don't need to go to the bubblers. So, I don't know if in any vendor evaluation that was looked into. I know we're encouraging recycling and bringing in their own containers, because we have the water filters in the upper grades, but was that discussed at all when you're looking at the new vendors? Or is it just staying the same as is with just the new vendors, but same product?
Normally, what we do is when we're identifying the vendors or the resources for the products that we're going to acquire, we usually use a listing of what our basic inventory sheets are or what our order sheets are.
Okay.
And then we use those as our comparison. So, say, for instance, with the French River Collaborative in the past, so say, for the past 10 years, we've used this starting block list of all these inventory items, because from the same perspective of utilizing the tech collaborative, they've got a general listing that they're providing to us to identify all the quantities that we'd be looking for for all the various products, whether it's beef, whether it's chicken, such as chicken nuggets, et cetera. And so, we use that as our starting block to identify what our quantities are going to be based on the menus that we're going to be providing to the schools respectively. And so, it might just be from the standpoint that we provide it for these other two schools just because it's been past practice, but I'm sure we can ask the question[1670.78] just 'cause it's been past practice, but I'm sure we can ask the question to see what the ability to provide that to the elementary schools, or see if there was some rationale behind why there isn't water bottles available.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you need to get rid of that conversation?
Anyone else? I'd just like to ask you how, I know you had a shortfall with that budget, how is that working out now?
With, um, with the changes that we've been able to implement, starting, uh, back in March, uh, some of the major changes were, obviously, the increase to the actual, uh, to the meals, approximately twenty-five cents...
Right.
For each of the, uh, each of the schools respectively. Um, we started the fiscal year, or let me rephrase this, when we went through and we had continued to do the projections up through March, at that particular point in time, we were looking at approximately a forty thousand dollar loss, uh, to the revolving accounts that were being utilized by maintaining the cost of overhead, uh, which entailed the, the staffing costs for the hours that were being worked. That was obviously impacted by, um, trying to come up with the best meals per labor hour ratio within the schools respectively as well. Uh, in addition to that was because of the purchases that we were utilizing, rather than maintaining the inventories from a different perspective, we had some items in inventory that we had large quantities of inventory, yet we were bringing in new products to provide similar meals, but again, without using the physical inventories that we had. So, in taking a couple of small changes just from those pieces of modifying the meal plan, as well as the hours, we were able to, and based on a projection we completed last week, actually, we're looking at a minimum of approximately a fifteen thousand dollar profit. So, that would actually make a change of close to fifty-five thousand dollars from where we were in March to where we are now. So, I'd just like to record, uh, identify that Mrs. King has done some major accomplishments in a very short period of time, and these in, uh, these modifications and improvements are kind of, um, unbelievable, I guess is the easiest way to say, in the amount of time and the efforts that she's been able to put in.
It's working, that's what we need to know.
It's working.
Great.
And with that being said, that's just the starting blocks for even, if you think about this is two and a half months.
Right, no, I understand that.
So, when you look at this for next fiscal year, when you have this ability and these resources for the entire fiscal year, and with the changes to the staff, because of obviously the relocations of buildings and so forth, all those items have been taken into consideration. So, we're looking at fiscal year sixteen to hopefully be as good, if not better, um, than what the current fiscal year is as of now.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I actually have a random question about the, um, the lunches. Can you find out, Dr. Brunel, if bottles of water are offered to the hot lunch students? Um, I thought it was just milk and juice, maybe, and my, it's just milk. And, um, I know, like, my daughter included, doesn't drink milk, so...
Sure.
Maybe there's a mini water that can be offered or something. And I, I really truly feel that that is her reasoning for not getting hot lunch most days, because she doesn't like the milk, so...
Okay. I'll certainly look into that. Yeah, you've reminded me of that.
Sure. I know they had water at Packer Chug for us when we went, but maybe just for adults, they don't have a quantity for...
Or the lower grades.
Unless that's a government thing.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, well, we'll find out.
We will, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, in addition, in your packet, you'll see a, a copy of a memo, uh, that I prepared and presented to Dr. Brunel regarding our Apple lease, uh, our Apple Inc. lease agreement. Um, what this identifies is three options that's been provided to us for the lease agreement of three hundred and twenty iPads that's going to be utilized out within the district for the two thousand and sixteen fiscal year. With the changes that we've been doing with respect to the pilot program this past year, the additional iPads for the construction project going through for the middle school, and these, this will allow for us to obviously have iPads, uh, for all students, uh, one-to-one ratio from, uh, the sixth grade up through the twelfth grade. What this is looking at is basically identifying the three options that we receive for, um, this particular lease, for those three hundred and twenty iPads. Um, my recommendation is that we utilize option two, uh, based on the fact that it provides us, um, a low interest rate on the finance agreement, which is approximately two point nine nine percent. It also identifies the fact that instead of having two separate lease agreements, one for the lease from last year of the four hundred iPads, and then one for the new, uh, lease agreement for the additional three hundred and twenty iPads, we'll be able to consolidate the two agreements, still keeping it within a three-year fiscal period, so we'd still be wrapping up the lease agreement as if we were at last year's contract. Um, and with the resources that we have between the CIP funds that we're utilizing for, um, our IT department, this would also be able to be managed financially from that perspective. Um, again, with that recommendation, again, I do recommend the option two, but as you can see, these are the three options that are available to us, uh, for the iPads.
So, would you like a motion to that?
Yes, please.
Can I get a motion to that?
I'll make the motion to approve the new lease agreement, option two.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for looking at us.
Oh, no problem. And, uh, and, uh, just to identify that, um, our IT department and, uh, Mr. Eric, uh, over in, spent a lot of time with me working on these respective pool values and so forth and so have, just wanna express my appreciation to him for his time.
Well, tell them we thank them too.
Yes.
In addition, you'll see in your packet is a memo, um, to Dr. Brunel as well regarding the special ed out-of-district tuition. Uh, what we did was we had gone through a process with, uh, Ms. Flynn and Ms. Kaufman and myself, uh, requesting for rate quotes respectively for, um, the various placement locations between two of our vendors, which is Vanpool Transportation and AA Transportation, uh, included, again, in your packet, you'll see this memo that was drafted that identified the rates for the vendor that we respectfully selected, selected for each of these, um, school locations for the placements of our students. Um, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Question, on the, um, rates, some have a monitor and some have a day rate?
Correct.
So, if they have a monitor rate and a day rate, it would be, it would be both combined?
Correct. What this is, is basically this identifies, for instance, if we utilize the, the Grove Schools, for instance, the students that participate in that travel time for the buses, we only do it occupy the, the bus itself, we don't, we don't have a monitor.
You don't need a monitor.
It basically goes to that particular location.
Okay.
When it deals with the Cotting School, the Mass Hospital, or the Kennedy Day School, those three routes specifically do need a, a bus monitor.
Okay.
And that's the reason why you showed the two different rates respectively.
All right.
And just keep in mind that these are actually the rates for the bus per day, so whether we have one bus rider or we have, um, say, ten students, it's still the same rate per bus per day. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You got a question, Jess?
No, did she need a motion on that, though? We typically would need a motion in, um, support of the contract recommendation by Mr. Barber.
Okay. I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to support the contract recommendation for the special education out-of-district transportation as recommended by Mr. Barber.
A second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much. In addition, you'll see a listing of our updated MS, um, MSBA pro-pay project cost report as of June thirty, uh, June eleventh, excuse me, two thousand and fifteen. As you'll see, we've had all of our submissions up through May submitted, and we're just currently waiting for two payments to be reimbursed to us for our offsetting costs that we've submitted for the middle school project. Again, in your packet, you'll see, I'll show this, again, everything's in your packet. You'll see a, a listing of what our values are, um, in our revolving accounts and other special revenue funds, um, through, uh, through the, actually, this is through the June twelfth, and for my apologies, I have still May fourteenth on the report, but this is the values through June twelfth. Do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions? No? I'll make a motion.
Based on the ability of ominous budget transfers, you'll also see in your packet a listing of all the transfers that we're utilizing, that we're completing, um, through June eleventh. These transfers are utilizing for the best of our abilities, the budgets that we have. These identify items such as making changes for the utility costs that we've been utilizing or that we've been expensed, uh, within, excuse me, within the district, in addition to modifications to our building repair and improvement encumbrances that we have, also for, um, various projections that we had had in the middle fiscal year until the end that had slight increases and changes that are also included, uh, identifying our payroll encumbrances, as well as changes for our substitute time, uh, especially come the end of the school year, when more individuals are utilizing their, their sick time, uh, or their, uh, eligible vacation times, um, we're utilizing, and we are in the process of utilizing substitutes, we need to make some respective changes in budgetary moves to cover those overtime costs as well as those substitute costs. Any questions?
I have a question, through the chair. Um, the Yongsheng parking rental, what is that exactly? Is that just for, uh, special events, or that we have to lose their space?
Uh, what we have is, we have a...
Lucky you weren't here then, Jess, believe me.
We, uh, we received, uh, a portion of funds, uh, that's used for the cost of, well...
So, um, the owner of Yongsheng, um, approached the school committee about utilizing, actually renting space on the weekends for valet to park their cars because they have limited parking. So, this is a contractual agreement that we've come up with, so he pays, um, us that annually, and we then can use that to make repairs as necessary to the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. So, this, so when you have the speed bump or the stop signs or the painting of that, uh, that particular area, those are usually where the fundings are coming from to, to identify those costs.
Okay. It doesn't come with free Chinese food or anything.
Hasn't yet.
That would be a funny one. Okay. In your continued, uh, items in your packet, yeah, you'll also find a, a year-to-day budget report that was generated through the, uh, November sixth, I'm sorry, the June eleventh, I'm reading my numbers backwards, uh, the, the June eleventh period of date, where you'll see based on those respective budget transfers that I just indicated, have actually been made to allow for us to have a more balanced budget, and so we can allow for us to, again, for additional financial planning, such as what Dr. Brunel and I worked on this afternoon. Do you have any questions on this report? Okay. Uh, not only the memo, but obviously for an open item, you'll see that I provided to you a, a memo, uh, that was provided to Dr. Brunel earlier today. It's regarding a sidewalk improvement project that, um, we are in the process of, of completing. Back in fiscal year two thousand and twelve, as part of our capital improvement plan, we had been provided funding, um, to allow for us to complete a sidewalk project for the Bryn Mawr Elementary School. Uh, over time, obviously, with making changes and trying to identify time necessary to make that particular improvement, uh, we have just completed our bid process, and, uh, we'd like to award the U.S. Payment Services, Inc., uh, the ability of the project, which is gonna be in the amount of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. Uh, as part of that project, uh, Mr. Fahy, my director of facilities, has already been spending time for planning, identifying the scope of work, as well as, um, preparing the overall project plan for the, the changes, such as, for instance, having Big Safe come out. And so, included in this memo is just an overview of those respective items for this particular project. Um, I'd like to...
Do you need a motion for this?
Yes, please.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Can we, can I ask a question first?
Sure, you can.
Thank you.
Well, I was waiting for the motion a second, then ask, but you can go.
Okay. Where is the sidewalk? Is it on the curve, or where are they doing the sidewalk?
It's actually replacing the current sidewalks that are actually at the school as we speak. Uh, Dr. Brunel, I have a couple of...
Inside along the building, correct?
It's inside along the building, and it actually goes up and, and goes up to the hill, just right to the top, so it's not town sidewalk, it's actually on school property.
Oh, school sidewalk. That's what I was wondering.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. So, I'll make a motion to approve, approve this.
Can I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in fa- any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Hey, just for informational purposes, uh, including myself, Mr. Fahy, uh, Ms. Moran and I are actually in the process of completing a, a summary report, just to provide to you for the next school committee meeting, that will identify primarily all of the CIP projects that have been in place, especially those, uh, directly relating to the, the middle school project, I'm sorry, uh, the, uh, Ten Swanson Road projects that have been, uh, taking place, um, just again, to keep you in the loop as far as all those, uh, upgrades that we've been making to the district.
Okay.
Okay. On a separate side, um, just obvious many of you know that this is my last school committee meeting that I'll be participating in.
Oh.
And, uh, with that being said, I just wanna express my appreciation, obviously, to members of the school committee, the superintendent, obviously, all the staff, whether it's the faculty of the schools, as well as the individuals that I've been dealing with within the district. It's been one of those great opportunities of almost becoming an, an additional part of a family, uh, when you deal with the amount of time that we've spoken about various projects, different things like that nature, uh, as well as just the camaraderie that I have with all the staff that are pretty much in, in our buildings. Um, with that being said, it's been a great opportunity, one that, uh, kinda you can easily say I cherish, but on the other side, because of personal reasons, having to make that change, but, again, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the committee?
You'll be missed. You definitely will be missed.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You've done a great job.
Yep.
Put our new principal off.
I would say thank you, you've done a great job, and it's a pleasure working with you, and hopefully, you know, everything works out for you, you and your family.
I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Anything else?
Uh, I do actually want to add one more thing, uh, certainly wish, wish Mr. Barber the best, he's done, done a nice job here, and Mrs. Worsbicky, I know will step right in, he's left us in good hands, so, that's great. Um, I did also just want to make you aware, I left at your seats, um, the proposed wording, if you remember, that you had decided earlier this year, this spring, to name the synthetic turf field at the Numinal School, the Randall Field, and the practice field, the Granger Field. So, um, this is the wording, I want to thank Mr. Ethier, Ken Ethier, who provided some information regarding this. He's actually gonna be helping us as well in coming up with, um, the language for the cross-country trail one as well. Mr. Fahy, Mr. Ethier and I walked the cross-country trail, it's gonna be great, I had shared with you about the Eagle Scout project, so, um, it's gonna be wonderful to have the kids truly doing a cross-country, so, just wanted to share this with you, I'll be sharing with the architects, um, tomorrow, and they'll get it, um, made on science.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything else from the committee? You got anything you wanna bring up? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
We're not, we don't need...
We don't tonight, no.
No, we don't.
No.
No, it's not gonna session tonight.
Can I ask, can I ask a question, anybody?
Sure, you can.
I served on a, thank you, I served on a committee to hire someone.
I'm glad you actually brought that up.
And I'm wondering...
We can announce that, so, the athletic director, thank you for that, Mrs. Holloway. Uh, we had a, a long process, we had, there were about, uh, eleven or twelve of us on the committee that included students, parent, parent representation, uh, coaches, administrators, teachers, and school committee rep, for the athletic director, and happy to announce that Mr. Brian Davis, who has been serving in the interim capacity, has been hired, and, um, we all believe he's gonna do a great job.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks for bringing it up, Kayla.
Yes. Well, I was wondering, was there a glitch somewhere that I didn't know about or something?
No, nope. All signed on.
Oh, great.
All signed on.
I'm sure we made him very happy.
We did, we did indeed.
I don't think I've ever met anyone that interviewed and said they loved what they did so much they'd do it for free.
I think that was a budgetary...
Jess, did you say something?
Yes, I think so.
And I, I did get word too, through the chair, um, that the boys who were in the semifinals out at Westfield State, uh, actually lost unfortunately today, but are to be congratulated for making it this far, they were a great team, and, uh, all of our athletic, um, teams have really done outstanding, as they always do, just as our fine art students and drama and, and academically, so, really a well-rounded, it's been a wonderful school year.
Yes, it really has.
Wonderful school year.
You have something, Jess?
Yeah, I just, um, was wondering when we find out about the assistant principal?
So, we will actually, I will announce that officially to you, but I, I can share with you, um, that an assistant principal has been hired. Um, he is a very high-energy, really, um, very, very excited, I think he's gonna make a great team. Mr. Lavelle, he'll be joining us, he's actually coming from the months in public schools, and, um, there was a, uh, a long process, he had been in Belchertown previously, so, we'll actually, I will be speaking with Mrs. Lopez tomorrow, so we'll, might actually post that up on Facebook, and that way people will know.
Okay, great.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, obtain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.